Yeah.
Hey, how are you doing? I'm doing good. Kelsey, hello, how are you? No, that's all right, that's all right. I've had them all too.
Oh, we're happy.
Yeah, I did.
I don't even like. You're so jail time.
Well, that will be good.
Do you have any? Doing strange acts for this.
It's hot, it's hot. Um, you mean the gun show? I don't know, worldwide. Well, I mean, the gun show will be at here, I think.
Well, certainly, I'm looking for. General show. My general market.
This thing you just go on our website. There, that we keep site. And if you put your address with Alan, he's. Okay, need my website. Yeah.
Six minutes. It wants to be a lot.
Yeah.
Four minutes.
Right. Oh, my gosh.
She's off. Are we supposed to be here?
Yeah.
You don't matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Wow. It's probably fucking all.
I mean, so. It's probably why you're not there. I guess you. I mean, obviously, you're.
I believe. Yeah. I'm sure. You're. But, uh, terrible. It was. It was. And.
So.
That's.
Yeah. Yeah. Remember, July. We felt on the first. They might as well.
Here now, the shot. Just come with. Actually, all of them.
And that's. Really, maybe he's. When I. Like, really, or should. Because I'm. Here, you see another. If I'm right. Please, like, they have to. Yeah. My friend, I saw. I was. Which were. Well, this is very. You.
I think.
Especially. I don't. Don't. There. There. I think. Uh. It's last. Yeah.
It's all. Yeah. Yeah.
And. They can.
Yeah.
He's new. Now, go.
Hello, Jerry.
Wow, look. The gals. I thought. Thank my God. My grace.
I'm going.
I'm here.
With a pencil.
Look at me.
Oh, this I know. I always. Some.
Yeah.
Oh. I wish. So.
And I didn't even let you have my chair. Especially.
Okay.
My last meeting.
I.
Halloween. And let them have. Yeah.
I want to make. There.
All right. Well. There's. Two people. There's a bit. Yeah. We have. So. So. They have. It's. You got. You got. Uh. It was. What's your? Are you good? That's a nightmare. I'm not only. I'm in. On your. You know. You're. I'm. I have. Nobody back. I mean.
She got. Our. She's.
He's. She's. She's. Sorry. I don't. The license.
It's.
So. We can. I'm. Okay. What could. I.
I were.
She's like. She was. Nice. I thought. So. I could. I was.
I was. I was. I remember. They're talking. Genius.
It's like.
I enjoy. Hold. I just.
I know. It was too late. We do. So. We want to cut that.
I know that. But it's. That's right.
I know.
Yeah, we're not.
That's fine. I can wait. I can wait till this. I just.
Yeah, no.
Oh, well.
So. Sweet, but those. Enjoy. And. Tell the. Yeah. And as a young person, she tells.
So. I guess. Check.
We watch. Sure. Like, sixty-four.
I feel like. See, that. I still. Come with that.
Yeah. Well, I got. It's so much. She likes to. You know. That's. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna. Okay.
Yeah. Like. You're not. Like. Yeah. Six. Okay. Go ahead and start this meeting. Make sure if you want to speak to us that you've signed the public participation. And I want everybody to make sure that they've signed yet. So. Uh, we'll go ahead. This is town council regular meeting Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, eighteen hundred hours. Um, Shelley, would you like to do the?
Yeah. I'd.
Super. Me too. We're. Yes. What? I've. It is. Just. Thank you, Shelley. Okay, we'll call Ms. Miller.
Councilor Henderson. Vice Mayor McKenzie. Mayor Hanson. Councilor Davis. Councilor Scott.
Here.
According to his present.
Okay. Uh, we're going ahead and to three public participation. Uh, if you'd like to address us, please come up here. Um, tell us your name, and then you've got three minutes. To address us, so. There you go.
Are you gonna go by the list? Phil, there is a list, and she's getting this.
Kelsey, what you just read off. People, thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Uh. Megan. Uh, Lou Gallagher.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Pastor Lou Gallagher, pastor of Life in Christ Fellowship in Eager. Um, I don't know who who I'm allowed to quote or anything, but. Uh, I read something interesting the other day by a gentleman that most of you know. Or at least heard of, his name is Mahatma Gandhi. He said, I. I admire your Christ. But I don't think much of your Christians. As a pastor, I believe that was probably because he hadn't met too many Christians with a passion for our Lord Jesus Christ. Now, I quoted him. I'd like to quote someone else now. Comes out of Matthew, chapter six, studying the verse nine. I'm not praying. I'm quoting. Our Father, which art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom comes. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation. But deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom. The power and the glory forever. Amen. Thus says two different people. I quoted them both for a reason. There are those that we admire. Those that we've heard of. And those that we respect. As a pastor, I have. Checked my entire congregation, and I have found no one in favor of the things that we're looking at tonight concerning. Dispensaries. I respect my people. I respect you. I ask you. To think about what we're doing. Protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey.
Maria Nugent.
Good evening. My name is Maria Nugent, and I live in Springerville, Arizona. Since the wishes of the citizens of our community were not respected and honored by the stacked town council. And. The ordinance was passed. The town council has invited what I call the American Dream Cartel into our community. I believe our town council owes the town of Eager an apology for letting this happen, which affects their community also. Since it appears that we may be stuck with this situation. It is imperative that we make sure the process from here on is done correctly. And to the letter of the law. There is no urgency here, and it would only be diligent on our part to have a public meeting followed by a general town council meeting. Before any conditional use permit be granted. And if anybody has any questions, they can.
Monica Banning.
I'll make five quick points in under two minutes. Monica Banning, a forty-year round Valley resident who lived in Springerville for fifteen years. Point one, Serenity's Serenity Smokes application should be immediately disqualified because she did not comply with town code section seventeen point eight four point zero six zero paragraph C. Nor was her application complete with several items of required information missing. Number two, Apache County dispensary in their application either overlooked or knowingly withheld the names and locations of the marijuana cultivars or suppliers they intend to use in the first one-plus year it will take for their cultivation site at Bowes, Arizona to get built and coming into production, if it gets built at all. This amounts to required information they neglected to provide in their application. Three, the town has multiple lawsuits currently against it and/or possible threats to sue, all resulting from the desire to bring in marijuana businesses. Town leadership should not approve any dispensary permit until its issues with those other multiple parties are resolved. Your citizens are tired of seeing their government getting involved in legal entanglements over this topic. Please don't create any more. Four, allowing these permit applicants to provide additional information now that was missing or which with or which enhances their permit packages submitted back in September. Makes for different permit content which town officials and the public have not had opportunity to study or comment on. Such changes constitute allowing new applications for the same use. Both companies have attorneys that should have ensured their application packages were complete before submission in September. Five, both permits should be denied by town council, or before considering otherwise, council should at least hold a public hearing on this matter. Per code, you will still have up to fifteen days to make your decision. I believe you should not vote in haste. Thank you.
It's hard to read. I believe it's Judy Ann Madrin. Julie.
Hello. As mentioned, my name is Judy Ann Madrin. I reside in Eager, Arizona. Um, with my family, but we also attend church here in Springerville, and we shop here in Springerville, we bank in Springerville. We do a lot in Springerville. I'm originally from a large metropolitan city. Me, I can enjoy the quiet, slower pace of a life when my husband and I can raise our six children for the last eighteen years. My husband was born and raised in Round Valley, as was his father beforehand. We have roots here. We take a special interest in our town. Small-town life appeals to us in raising our children versus a metropolitan lifestyle. We are here to address those who have come. Because they want to own a recreational marijuana dispensary, and yet they have no roots in our town, no family they are raising. They're simply coming here to question on the business of recreational marijuana. That is their only interest. They don't care about the countless reports and research of how marijuana affects communities and. They hide behind a law that should never have happened. The fact that it has passed as a law doesn't make it right. Many laws. And decades later, we are trying to reverse them because of the effects it has caused on our society. This is no different. I do not want a recreational marijuana dispensary in our valley. Consider the effects other towns are experiencing, and don't bring it here. Please consider that wreaking financial benefit at the cost of the effect of marijuana on individual lives, family lives, or youth, health, and community safety is just not worth it. It will never compensate for the negative effects it has on society. Do not trust in the promises that were made. Our loyalty should be to the youth of Springerville and eager to the citizens. And let's have the courage to challenge the law that should never have been. Thank you for these three months.
Is that a ballgame?
Kay Dyson.
Hey, Dyson, I live in the town of Springerville. I ask that you uphold the decision of the planning and zoning commission regarding the denial of the two CUPs as mentioned. I ask that you stop accepting dispensary applications until the town can effectively put together a way to examine dispensary applicants. You have a road, a process for paving roads where you have to bid, that type of thing, to make sure you're getting the best deal of your buck. Yet we're inviting dispensaries to into this town, selling mind-altering drugs, and all they have to do is fill out a two- or three-page checklist. I have problems with that. We expect our officials to protect our health, safety, and welfare. It's time you step up and do that. I ask that you address all the lawsuits first before you move forward. Especially White Mountains Flower. Uh, Robbie Chris, I don't know how much you paid for that parcel of land that I would find out. Spending way too much money. On marijuana and legal fees. Um, no offense, Tosca.
That's okay.
Yeah. I just think there are so many other things that we could be spending money on, like roads and water and quality life issues. It's time to listen to the people. We voted no on two oh seven. We stopped a farm that was going to be built, a land that we didn't even own, and we were trying to lose it. We ran a recall. We had over a hundred and thirty names for each of the people on the recall, or two. One was the mayor, another person who's left the community. Uh, that failed because we didn't put it on the right-sized paper. So in August, we all voted, people of the town of Springerville only, Dawn, Springerville only. Voted against two pro-cannabis candidates. One, our mayor. The other, Mr. Candlearia, with a smoke shot. They were clearly pro-cannabis candidates. We defeated them by over five hundred votes each. Five hundred votes each defeated them. It's time to open your eyes, look at the reality. We don't want cannabis grown here, and we don't want cannabis sold here. We want to be cannabis-free in two thousand and three. And we ask that those people who are veterans here and need. The, uh, cannabis for their their. Health issues. Call me. Call anybody. You can get. A courier to drive to Shaw. How many of you go to Shaw once a month, at least? It's okay, go there. Thank you.
So, sorry. Um, Steve, last name starts with a K, I cannot read it.
Steve Konarowski, uh, Eager, Arizona. Um, quoting from the same book as Luke did there, for the love of money is real of all evil. And this is what you're dealing with. This has not been. An on-the-table, over-the-table business ever. If it was, we'd go to Dr. Smith, he'll give a prescription, we go to Western Drive and get it. This is, uh, all cash business. Uh, they're at their own. Uh, will to. Use the numbers they want to use. They can, they can budget those numbers however they like. Steve, all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Angie Kelly.
Hello, my name is Angie Kelly. I am from Eager, Arizona, but I teach down in St. John's at a high, at St. John's High School, and I come to you as a high school teacher. Who looks at kids daily. Who do not have parents that give them good examples to follow. I hear people in the industry telling us, oh, we should educate the kids. But that's the parent's responsibility. I'm trying to educate the kids. I am trying very hard. I'm trying to tell them that when they smoke marijuana, it affects their brains. They aren't allowed to further develop their brains if they're smoking marijuana. The problem is, is when we have dispensaries, when we have smoke shots, you all are sending a message to these kids that we're lying. That it's okay to smoke marijuana. If you can legally sell it in this town, if you're gonna offer it to this town, you're telling kids, go ahead, smoke it. And I just want to quote this famous gentleman named Matthew. But whoever causes one of these little ones to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone. Fastened around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea. Do not pass these.
Enough.
Pat Kelly.
Patrick Kelly, Eager. Um. I know it's so sad coming into this small town, Springerville, so welcome, Springerville. Gateway to White Mountains. We plan on changing that gateway to recreational drugs, pot. Guys, crazy. Thank you.
Mike Campbell.
Mike Campbell. Somehow I get looked upon as a community leader for the nonprofit work I do. Goes, everything we raise in Chromedome goes back to the school to benefit our kids. To have a dispensary in town. Is not the right message that's been heard like that. We can all come up with a thousand ideas why you should not. Give any either one of these applicants a conditional use permit, but you only want. And the one is gonna come from your planning and zoning committee. I sat in this meeting. Truly, neither of the applicants filled out their application properly. One was deceitful, one just neglected to answer a question. So you have the one reason you need comes from the planning and zoning. Actually, uphill. There. Thank you.
Jennifer Harding.
Good evening, council, members of the community. We, as members of this community, have been consistent, vocal, and involved in opposition to marijuana businesses in the town of Springerville. The southern Apache County community embodies a strong family life perspective. Many people visit or relocate here for this very reason. Please do not allow the means for disintegration of these time-honored beliefs by allowing such destructive enterprise into our town limits. If this business model was truly in the interest of this community, A, the voters would have approved the proposition which neither Springerville or eager citizens approved. B, local business owners would have been interested in developing a pop shop, yet only out-of-towners have applied. C, community residents, businesses, school administrators, teachers, healthcare professionals, clergy, and others would have been supportive of a new business. As you are know, as you know, we are not supportive of this model. If one considers the primary reason for any person or company to operate a marijuana dispensary in this town is to take the money out of the pockets of local residents. I do not know of any wealthy person in this community who uses recreational marijuana. That means these companies are targeting a user of the product who can likely ill afford to buy it, especially in the current economic climate. The talk about charity and community involvement and employment may be great talking points, but are way down the list of the real reason they wish to operate here. They must think that we are unable to see the primary. They must think that we are unable to see the primary motive, which are profits from an economically deprived area. The premise that these operations will bring economic stability to our area is outlandish. The profits generated will be sent to the company's headquarters, which are all out of town. Or perhaps they believe that we are ill equipped to deny them on the law. Either way, they should be not denied as they behave as opportunists, promising the sun and the moon and charity, but ultimately only trying to pad their bank accounts. Please, please, please deny the CU application appeals of Apache County dispensary and Serenity Smoke for their adult use marijuana dispensaries, which is on the agenda. There are many legal reasons to do so. There is currently a third party negotiating with the town for another dispensary. This matter has been on the council agenda for months in each session. It appears that this matter should be completely resolved prior to granting of any other dispensary applications being entertained in order to follow the town ordinances. I believe that the town should clear the decks before acting in a manner which will well place the town in another legal dispute as a result of granting new dispensary operations, which may have to be reversed or rescinded. Thank you.
Bob Dyson.
Good evening, council. Bob Dyson from Springerville. Thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for your opportunity to talk. Seems to me, when you look at this evening's agenda and the last agendas for the last few meetings, something sticks out. We've been under this discussion of various cannabis questions for a while. I would suggest for the last couple of years, when our town council did not tell us anything about opting out of Prop 207. And so that tells me that we go back to chickens coming home loose right now. All these people that are for this, I think is kind of a, you might say, a siege by the cannabis industry or our town. And as a resident and taxpayer, I'm getting a little tired of paying for all the time and expense having to deal with this. So I'm going to ask you two things. One, tonight, to deny those condition, those permits, we have no business doing this in this town. And secondly, think proactively, get strategy together that we don't have to do this again. We've seen we do this almost every meeting now. That's got to come to a stop. Thanks for your time.
Carrie Cho.
Carrie Cho, Springerville. I'm here for comedy relief and breaking up. I'd like to remind this community, one of the reasons we're moved here, and you all know this. This is a loving, wonderful community, and we need to remember we need to be long. I'm part of a, of a wonderful group that's called the Family Valium Coalition. And this coalition is, those of us, many of us from nonstop, it's different churches, different other places that are here to help the community. I want to remind you of two exciting opportunities to remember what a great community this is. On this coming Sunday, we will have the, the Thanksgiving, Community Thanksgiving Service. This service is for the entire community to come and give thanks for our wonderful help. It is also a place where you can bring in handbooks for roundabout cares and also make donations to roundberry, how we care to help them continue to help our, our people in this town. The second one is the recent for the season choral concert, which is, will be held the 5th of December at the High School Lot of Point. And that again is a place for us to feel good, be part of the community and feel love for each other. On the other hand, little league basketball is starting soon. Registrations will happen, start happening in the middle of November. Games will be in January and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Michelle Middred.
Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I've been helped in Springerville for over 20 years. I've been practicing nursing the community for over 15 years. And during my time as a nurse, I have been dedicated to improving the health of the community and improving the health of the patients that I take care of. I find the proposal of marijuana dispensary goes against everything that I have tried to do personally over the past 15 years. It also goes against all of the good efforts of other community members that have tried to serve and make our community a healthy and safe place to live with a high quality of life. I'm not the only one who feels this way. And I share with you just a few statistics that I shared over the summer about lessons learned from state marijuana legislation. This was a study done by Yale University and Harvard Medical School. And the findings were that marijuana dispensaries were disproportionately located in rural areas. This is because these, these groups target rural areas. And why do they target rural areas? They do this because of the health disparities found in rural areas, which are poverty, lack of education. There's a higher incidence of depression and mental illness. And so these companies know that they can create a profit in these communities. So you see them settle here, not just one, but maybe two or three, depending on the size of the community. And here's, here's what happens when this, when we allow this, these companies to come in. These communities have higher rates of marijuana related driving fatalities, issues of legally sold but contaminated marijuana base and other marijuana problems, more marijuana related emergency department visits, hospitalizations and accidental disposal exposures. So what we, what we may see is children of those who use marijuana, although we cannot generalize and say that all are irresponsible, we will see kids with accidental exposures with the increase of this in the community. We see in those communities expansive and lucrative criminal markets and increases in workplace problems, including labor shortages and accidents. 25% increase in cannabis use disorder, hospitalizations increased to 101% in Colorado after implementing the legalization of marijuana. And on a personal note, I would just like to share, I have plans to see my brother over Thanksgiving next week. I have not seen him in over 25 years. I've not seen him because he has been in and out of prison for drug related crimes, crimes that are, to me, unthinkable. And let me tell you how it started, marijuana. Thank you.
Kathy Ware.
Kathy Ware, Elise, Springerville, one block down. Most of the one mentioned about being a neighbor to the dispensary. I noticed when the dispensary was right here, the one that's right close, that the foot traffic all went on the north side of the street. I've heard arguments that it'll bring business. But I noticed that people wouldn't walk by the store. And when the store stopped, then the people walked down again, especially from Reed Motel and the Eljo that walk over to our city park and then walk on down to Western Drug. The other problem I had being close to the dispensary was their security system. They have a security system that had a very loud beep every second, every minute, every hour that the shop was closed, which was all weekend. I live over a block away and it was disturbing to my sleep. You could hear it two blocks away. I was one step from calling the cops on the noise or just bringing a towel and some duct tape and wrapping that thing. Thank you.
Fay Sotters.
Council, we've put our name down thinking for the applicant, both kinds too as well.
Okay. Melina Hannah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Melina Hannah, St. John's, Arizona. I've worked with Terrapin for over a year in consultant capacity. In that time, I gained a respect for their leadership and integrity. I've seen the investment that they put into the communities in which they locate. While I'm not pro recreational marijuana use and food production and economic development, and those are the themes that they plan to bring. The tax revenue generated from their establishment would stay in Springerville and be able to be used at the discretion of the council for activities like prevention, law enforcement, emergency services. One point that I'd like to share with you is that if you just go through the communities of Eager and Springerville, there are 13 locations where alcohol can be purchased. That's outside of any special permits that are issued by special event coordinators. And we don't usually see any opposition to those types of permits. And alcohol, as we know, there's lots of people who warrant the detrimental effects of that. If we just include the communities of St. John's Concho and Vernon, that number jumps to 21 establishments in Southern Apache County. Most of those establishments, a person under 21 can walk past that product while they're shopping for something else. There's no posted security in, in, in any of those 21 establishments. We're talking about one marijuana dispensary, cannabis dispensary, with 24 hour security. So I just think that's an important point to bring up. And, you know, the, the age of use is 21. And nobody's allowed into that establishment who doesn't meet those criteria. I understand some of the peripheral concerns, but there's an ordinance and these dispensary companies are trying to make application within the framework of those ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all on the list. If you want to invite anyone up who's not on the list. Otherwise, I do have some written comments.
You know, I don't think so.
Would you like me to read the written comment?
Yeah. Read the written comment.
I'm the list.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed Shannon Latham. Sorry, Shannon.
Okay. Come up. So, okay, if you guys signed up, we'll let you see.
What is your name?
Thank you.
Henry Lever.
I think you signed the wrong list, but we'll add you, Henry.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to have comments today. I really hadn't prepared anything because I didn't know there are going to be open comments for this. I have been listening, even the discussion about alcohol. We go and teach at the middle school and they'll say, well, why do we have this stuff? If we know it's harmful, if that hurts us, cigarette, alcohol. I think we've learned a lot of lessons. I don't think we need to just put it everywhere in order to say, well, we do that with alcohol, we do that with tobacco. We already know that does cause and encourage more use. On a personal note, we work with the high school students that get caught with violations of alcohol and drug policies at the school. Every single time it's marijuana, every time. And these kids are devastated. They're already dependent on it, whether it's psychological or whether it's a physiological dependence on it. They're emotional about it, or you don't want it, but they know that they have to have it now. These are like sophors, engineers in high school. On a personal note, we've seen my own family, I have a brother, two cousins, that did everything right. They got their medical marijuana card because they thought it would help with their mental health. My brother's a veteran. He thought it would help with some issues he was dealing with. He started using that as his treatment. I saw such a decline in his mental health that was devastating. He had to be institutionalized. He, he lost his family. We're seeing him rebuild right now, and I'm really proud of him. This is not harmless. This is not a cure all. We could learn from tobacco, big tobacco. And in the twenties, we were told that these cigarettes could cure everything and doctors would endorse, endorse them. We knew later on that these were all lies. It was a nicotine delivery device. Marijuana, we will find the same path. I would hope we learn from our history. I hope we wouldn't be giddy to just jump into business with something that we know is harmful. But it benefits some people. We see great risks that come with it. And so I just ask that you will back up what we've seen with the planning and zoning committee, that we will make sure that we're not bringing stuff into our community that is not for the health and the safety of our community members. Thank you.
Henry.
Oh, let's go crowd tonight. Hello again, everyone. My name is Henry Lever. I live in Eager. And I am the vice chair of the Apache County Libertarian Party. As most of you know, I spoke here last week in the interest of freedom. And this week I will do so again in my typical obnoxious and moralizing tone, as in my I would say, think first of liberty and ignore some of the peripheral discussions we've seen tonight. Ignore the talk of money, jobs, economic development, of the minutia of these particular applications. But more importantly, I ask you, the community and this council, to ignore the talk of safety and the will of the majority. This is a distraction to the higher ideal of liberty, which we should all thrive. Those in the room, well read with regards to political philosophy, would know that every right, every freedom and every liberty which we have is built on a foundation of the respect for private property. And the business people who have applied for these permits are the legitimate users of this property. The urge to control the lives of others is the spirit from which all tyranny is born. And it is no business of anyone here what these business owners or their patrons and customers do in these businesses. I don't smoke marijuana or anything else, but by imposing your will on those that do, you violate their rights. As a final aside, if you're worried about the example that things like this set to children, consider teaching them that they should have the bravery to defend freedom, even freedom, to take human action which is opposed by the madness of the crowd. Thank you.
That it, council? Okay, go ahead.
Written comments received prior to 2 o'clock PM today, November 16th, will not be read individually out loud due to the volume and will be summarized as follows. We received a total of 536 letters regarding agenda items nine through 11. Broken down, this is summarized as approximately 279 letters in opposition of both CUPs and approximately 250 letters of support to the CUP application for Serenity Smoke at proposed location 279 South Mountain Avenue. All these letters are available in my office for inspection.
Good. That it, council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to four, council manager and staff before, council. You know, we're good. Okay. Chris.
Okay. Manager's report. First off, I want to know that we held interviews to replace Dennis's position at the, for the police admin position. Filling Dennis the chief is going to be a pretty hard job to do. But after the interviews, we did find a qualified candidate. We think it's going to be a good fit over there. And it looks like their starting date won't be until the first of the year. All right. Next thing, on Veterans Day, some of the town staff helped put flags up at the local cemeteries. Another bit of news is the council Christmas tree is up in the Heritage Center for annual Christmas tree judging contest. And so, and the judging will be on the 29th of November. Next, we have Santa will be visiting the children in the theater from the Heritage Center. I think, I think at noon. And then later in the evening of the third, the mayor of the third, the mayor will light the tree at the park down here by the post office. And hopefully we have a train down there for the kids to ride and stuff. And lastly, please don't forget the town Christmas party for elected officials and town staff. And that is on December eighth, and it starts at five. And that's all I have.
Okay. Steve, you got anything? No. Do I have any other staff that needs to speak to us? Okay, we shall move on.
So under item number four, under staff reports, we also have the planning and zoning report to council. So if an official from the planning and zoning would like to give a brief report to council.
Okay, thanks, Chris. You gonna do that, Terry?
Yes. Terry Show, I am the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am to speak to the thoughts and the wishes and the immense amount of work that our council, that our commission puts together. We spent hours reviewing the criteria for these permits. We read them, and for those of you that came, you know that we spent about two and ten, three hours in executive session and discussion concerning these two permits. The both of the CUPs were denied on the basis of our town ordinance, seventeen dot six four dot oh three oh, which in section B, number one, says the applicant shall, A, the names and provide the names and locations of the offsite marijuana cultivation operation as associated with the dispensary. In long discussions, we felt that neither of these CUPs fulfilled that requirement. And therefore, we could not get behind either one of these CUPs. I will tell you that as a commission, our job is to take and look at these types of applications, resoning applicants, and all sorts of things. There's a list, a whole page long of the things we have to look at. And we have to make sure they meet every requirement. Because once you wiggle a little bit on one and say, well, maybe it almost said that, then the next time, somebody says, well, last time you said it almost. So we cannot, we cannot do that with this class. I would like to read the comments of one of our other commissioners. Per town ordinance, the applicant is required to provide the name and location of the offsite marijuana cultivation operation associated with dispensary. The key word in that sentence is "operation." Operation is defined as performance of practical work, the quality or state of being functional, a method or manner of functioning. For that description, you would take the word "operation" as currently existing operation site for the intended source product for sale in the dispensary. Serenity Smoke failed to acknowledge any cultivation location within their application, creating a null and void contract. Apache County Dispensary listed a name and a location site located in La Plaz County. This location is currently a raw piece of land. There is no structure. There's no existing operation. This, per the eyes of Planning and Zoning Commission, creates another null and void contract. We are well aware that the fact that due to the ordinance that the town put in place years ago, combined with the passing of Prop two oh seven, the likelihood of the town of Springerville having a dispensary is extremely great. My issue with the applications in question is their validity and legality. I ask the council to take this into deep consideration. Remember the oath of office they swore to when they became a member of our council, no matter how much time you have left in that position. It is the thoughts of our commission that we will find the dispenser that meets all the recommendations because we know that was a law, and we have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Okay, anything else? All right. Item five, Chris.
So this is an agenda as of the public hearing for the CDBG funds, but we're going to postpone that hearing, and the date will be?
December twelfth at four o'clock PM here.
December twelfth, yes.
It's going to be staff hosted, so council does not have to host that public hearing, but you're welcome to show up. Let us know if you have any ideas or hear the ideas.
This is open to the public also?
Yeah, open to the public. So if you have any great ideas for our CDBG grant, December twelfth, come share those ideas.
Okay.
Four o'clock.
Okay, so we'll just move on to six, consent items, discussion, possible actions to adopt. Consent items five, six A and six B is presented.
Maybe most of whom we adopt in six A and six B is presented.
Again, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any votes? Okay. Old business, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five, an ordinance putting age limits on manufactured mobile homes being moved in and within the town of Springerville. This is the second reading. An ordinance of the town of Springerville, Apache County, Arizona, amending the town code title seventeen, chapter seventeen point two eight, section seventeen point two eight point one eight zero, mobile homes or manufactured homes related to the age of homes, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and establishing effective date. No motion?
That was just a read.
That was just a read. How we're going to start the beat? Yeah, discussion, possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five. Second. Okay, any other discussion on that one? That's good. Okay, all in favor? Any votes? Nope. Okay, new business, awards appreciation. Andrew Colby will presenting some awards of appreciation.
Okay. Can you help the citizens? First, I want to bring Dennis up.
Hey, Dennis.
And Dennis hasn't left the town, but he's left the police department. And he's got, what, twenty-two years in the police department? And we want to give him this, this appreciation for his service. And we're happy that he's still with the town. And we hope that we can give him one in twenty-two more years. Okay, next, Mayor Phil Hanson. Mayor Hanson has been with the town and served in, he served in PNC, served on county.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
By the Zoning, Springerville Municipal Airport Advisory Committee, council for two and a half, mayor is for.
So, and he's, the mayor is coming December thirty-first.
At midnight.
At midnight.
Trust me.
He, well, hopefully, we could still have him around here to be doing some things. But anyway, do what it presents.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that.
Thanks to the mayor.
Thank you, Josh.
And then now, Matt.
Matt.
Come on down.
Get Matt.
Matt has also served this year.
Five years PNC, ten years council.
So, and Matt has decided not to run. He wants to retire from that. And we want to give him this appreciation for what he's done for the town. And thank you very much.
Thank you. That all of Chris?
That's it for right now.
That's it? Okay, you got that one done. Okay, now we'll go to item nine. Presentation of appeal by Apache County Dispensary. Apache County Dispensary is appealing the denial of conditional use permit for a marijuana dispensary supposed to be located at nine hundred East Main Street. They may have no more than ten minutes to reject their appeal. So, how about? Ten minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm Skip Becker. I'm Director of Project Management and Development.
Would you like to run your presentation as well? It's written, Freddie.
I'll be joining the presentation.
Oh, you're going to get, oh, I was going to get background on that half the time, so you guys fix me. Okay. Sorry, thanks.
So we believe that it is important to let you know who we are and how we relate and understand your community in rural Arizona. In two thousand and fifteen, I was elected to the Board of Directors of the Arizona Association for Economic Development. I served as the chairman of the Rural Committee for three years, traveling this state extensively, getting an understanding of the challenges facing rural Arizona. I currently serve as a president-elect. In next spring, I will take my seat as president of this statewide association. I was elected to this board as a member for the work that I am doing in rural Arizona. That's right, folks, I'm in a nonprofit in La Plaz County, a county that resembles economically Apache County. Part of our company model is to invest and spend extensive time understanding the area we have chosen to operate in through the state of Arizona license acquisition process. We look at how we can become part of the fabric of the area and communities we operate. I have been working in Apache County for eleven months. I've been meeting with local business owners and residents to gain an understanding of the social and economic. Terrapin currently belongs to the Springerville Eager, opening with commerce, and have donated to the Ag Cooperative Extension that serves Apache County area. To date, Terrapin has given nearly a million dollars in donations to help others and create goodwill in the areas that we operate throughout the whole United States. So very, one of those locations is in Lock Haven, Clinton County, PA, very rural area. We created almost two hundred jobs. When we first went into the area, people were, were, you know, kind of standoffish. Didn't understand what we were doing. We got there now. We've been there for five years. They're very happy we're there. Terrapin chose to develop nine hundred East Main property as it offered a greater economic impact in the town of Springerville with the development of a much more costly ground-up build-out, adding a beautiful new building in Springerville. And by not removing the existing building that I have extensive experience in developing, we will find the best use for that building, the old Los Dos, and figure out some way that we can really aid this community, some way that fits within the ordinance. Terrapin will create six to ten jobs that will pay well above the median wage, and we offer a comprehensive benefits path. We are very active with veterans as they handle the security in our facilities throughout the US. We conservatively estimate that we will contribute thirty thousand a quarter to the town of Springerville. You would have been here at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. Steve West presented that when he was town manager, they contributed seventeen, the old dispensary that was here in town contributed seventeen thousand dollars a quarter. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, folks. It'd be good for your coverage and sales tax collection.
Turn it over to Peter Marcus. I should go quick here for the sake of time. I'm the Peter Marcus VP of Communications for Terrapin. We were founded in two thousand and nineteen. That's thirteen years of experience. We are one of the few, if not only, multi-state cannabis companies that remains family owned and private. We have extensive experience when it comes to training. If you're looking for the best cannabis company that will be compliant, we have never had an issue that couldn't be resolved within forty-eight hours. We are members of all chambers, the Better Business Bureau. We receive awards from chambers for our work. Vet Force is our security force. We're talking twenty-four seven securely by former military and police. All cannabis is tested for purity potency. There is no way for microbial or damage to cannabis to leave our stores. Our focus, as we said, has always been on rural communities. We've always fit in with those communities in Clinton County. Today, we packed one hundred lunches for the local church for a food bank in the neighborhood. We embed ourselves in those communities. And just to clear up a few things, teen use declines everywhere marijuana is legal. Scholarships are offered as a result of legalization. K-12 is funded, and we all bank our money, just wanted to clear it up.
Peter, Peter mentioned saying you started in two thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Just click on your location.
So give me just a moment. So, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council, attorney, Harry, manager, Colby. Thank you for the time. What I'm going to do, now that you've heard a little bit about Terrapin, what I'd like to do is just run you through the application and just show that, you know, Planning and Zoning reviewed it, found that they had all the requirements but one, the requirement that the cultivation site be currently operational and not operational in the future. I will touch on this and explain that the term "operation" in the ordinance doesn't mean operational as a status. Then based on all this, I'm going to show you how the proposed location checks all the boxes for the proposed use, and the conditional use permit should be awarded for this particular location. This location is ideal as it is located at the edge of your town on a one-acre lot that is zoned at C one, general commercial. Terrapin is investing in the Springerville community by being at this location. They are proposing to build a brand-new building next to the former Los Dos Melinos. It will be a much bigger investment for Springerville as local contractors and materials will be used. And it will add additional commercial square footage to Springerville versus only retrofitting or replacing the Los Dos Melinos that hopefully the applicant is hoping to use that building in the future, either as a community donation or to find another revenue stream for the community. As you can see, let me turn the lights off. As this building is being built for specific use, it could be fitted to meet or exceed Springerville's developmental requirements. You can see here in the conceptual drawing, it's safe back from both the frontage and residential with a tasteful design to blend into the community. Here's a picture of it here. The building exceeds all separation requirements that ordinance. The application, as you can see here, was complete, and it does show that the proposed dispensary was state and measured. And since the last commission hearing, even though a survey is not required in the ordinance, we have a staff survey to confirm that the separation requirements have been exceeded. And we can hand that out to you. But the building footprint is two hundred and thirty-three feet away from residential. And additionally, it could be moved if needed, an additional forty feet further from residential if needed. In addition, the location of the building exceeds separation requirements by a minimum of three times what is required in the ordinance of two hundred and five hundred feet from places of worship and schools. This location, for this use, checks all the boxes. Mayor and council, this is the application that was submitted and deemed complete by staff and by the commission, except for the one requirement. All of the information required by the ordinance was provided in the application, and it complied with all the, with all the requirements. As you can see, here are the, all the requirements are listed. Not all of them, but the majority of them that are listed in the ordinance. But however, as we all know, after careful review, the commission denied our application. There was confusion as to interpretation of the term "operation" within this section of the ordinance. So you can see here, this is what it comes down to. And this is what it says. Applicant shall provide the names and locations of the offsite marijuana cultivation operation associated with dispensary. The commission misinterpreted this to mean that we were required to provide an existing. The commission misinterpreted this to mean that we were required to provide an existing cultivation site, not the name and of a cultivation site that would be operational in the future. We do not think this section means that. Here's why. The confusion was centered around the term operation. Please note that the ordinance does not require that the physical facility be operational, or does it use descriptive words indicating current, past, existing, or future? It utilizes the term operation, a noun and not a verb, to describe cultivation site as an operation or a business. The ordinance requires a response, not a status of cultivation. Most importantly, this requirement inadvertently created by the commission, um, misinterpretation creates a legal impossibility. It runs contrary to state law. Um, look, to require a functioning site prior to the retail site being established, it simply just cannot be done. It's against state law. Terrapin met the requirement in its application to commission. They provided both the name and location of the cultivation operation slash business and explained that it was outfitted with water and electricity, ready to go. And Terrapin's application was complete in every other regard.
That's ten minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Then we'll go to Ken, presentation of appeal by Serenity Smoke Shop. Serenity Smoke Shop is doing the denial of condition of use permit for marijuana dispensary proposed at two seventy-nine East Main Street. Ten minutes.
I'm just gonna check her. I'm making sure I'm not, sorry. Mayor, Vice Mayor Council, my name is Lucy, I'm from Hamilton, Birmingham. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'm in here to talk about two seventy-nine South Mountain Avenue application. So first, about Springerville Smoke, uh, Serenity Smoke and Terry Candelaria. In two thousand and twenty, voters did approve Prop. Those have a known for smart and safe app in the state of Arizona. Authorizes retail sale marijuana through an establishment license. In April twenty twenty-one, Terry and Springerville Smoke was awarded one of the two licenses specific to Apache County. The state requires that Terry locate in Apache County. Frankly, the state requires that both of these licenses operate here in Apache County. Town Council, you may or may not have noticed, the planning commission did, the CUP application was filed under the name Serenity Smoke, but registration certificate is named Springerville Smoke. I just want to clarify that Terry owns both entities. Uh, the award was to Springerville Smoke, but she will transfer that into Serenity Smoke, uh, once a CBT is approved. Regardless of the naming nuances, they're both Terry. Many of you know, may know Terry as the owner of a small local business in Springerville that is regulated by the Arizona Department of Health Services, the same as the marijuana program. May, what you might not know, though, is Terry is an accomplished businesswoman with her MBA, Masters and Master, Masters in Business Development. Terry's background is in business management and real estate. She was previously the Senior Director of Facilities, where she oversaw nearly sixteen employees, a trustworthy leader. And in her new position, Terry is responsible for two major real estate ground up development projects to the tune of forty-eight million, the only one is only forty-six million dollars. But more important than her impressive business accomplishments, most important, Terry is a grandmother and a mother with longstanding ties to Springerville. Terry's grandson goes to the middle school, and she's been married for forty-seven years, which I think is pretty impressive. Terry has business experience and the character operate with the commitment to the, uh, the commitment to the community at heart. As for the application, the CUP application was complete. The zoning ordinance requires the names and location of offsite cultivation marijuana locations to be listed. The application correctly responded to that with this vertical integration, as stated by the other applicant, is legally impermissible by state law. I talked about that in my appeal letter, and I'm happy to talk about it more after you have any questions. The zoning ordinance did not mandate that an applicant was contracted with a cultivator. But once we understood that, complaining that the intent of the zoning ordinance is that we have a, a contract that's applied once a dispensary is oper, operational, we were here, we're here to tell you that Terry does have a relationship with a well-established cultivation op, uh, operator in Arizona, let me pass it over to her.
Thank you. My name is Don Fletcher. I am here to speak on behalf of the founders of Nature's Medicine, discuss who they are and their agreement and understanding with the applicant here. I, uh, I start off by saying there's been lots of preferences to scripture here. Standing here talking about cannabis, I feel like Daniel in The Lion's Den, if you know what I mean. There's lots of people opposed to this. I want to talk a little bit about the law, though, and it was talked about earlier. Sometimes we like the laws, sometimes we don't like the laws. But regardless of what it is, there is something known as the rule of law and what we must do. And as you've heard, the voters decided that the state of Arizona, there should be two dispensaries located in Apache County. I know a little bit about the rule of law because I studied it for three years at Brigham and University and graduated from law school there. I know a little bit about the law because I went to work for Malvin Shelley, who was a judge from Navajo County, went on the Arizona Court of Appeals where I had to help him interpret the law as a judge. I know a little bit about the law because I worked with the United States Justice Department for eight years, or prosecuted white collar crimes, money laundering, and various other things. If we don't follow the laws, the fabric of our community starts unraveling. We might not like the law, but it's the law, and we have to follow the law. Regarding me personally, why am I here and who am I? Well, I'm a Wyoming boy. I know cold. I shoveled lots of snow in my day. If you know anything about the plains of Wyoming, sometimes it blows a lot. Sometimes I shovel snow three times a day, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, and once in the evening. I also had the opportunity of going to Australia for two years. While I was there, I was in the outback of Australia. I learned the dry heat, and I enjoyed it. As a result of that, when I finished with my law studies, I had the opportunity of coming to Arizona where I get to enjoy both. I can have the dry heat of Phoenix. I can go skiing at a snowbowl and sunrise. I can also enjoy the autumn leaves and pure air. I can also go snowmobiling in Hannigan's Meadow. I love Arizona, and I love the state. I love what I get to do. I want to talk to you for just a few moments about Nature's Medicine and why I represented the founders and who they are and what they have been involved in. Nature's, uh, medicine, I've been involved with them for over six years. I've represented them in various legal matters. I found the founders to be men of incredible integrity. They follow the law. In Arizona, we have a very heavily regulated industry, regulated by the Department of Health Services. To operate a dispensary, there's rules that must be followed. These gentlemen know the laws, and they follow the laws. I assisted them in acquiring three dispensaries, most recently the one in Shawis. I handled that transaction. I worked with them through this process. I saw how they were committed to the principle of the rule of law and making sure they comply with everything that the Arizona Department of Transportation may want. I've also assisted them with their, their grow facility. They have an existing grow facility. They don't have to wait for one. It's in Amato, uh, Arizona. I don't know if you know where Amata is, but it's north of Tucson on your way to Nagals. There they have a modern grow facility that they've had for over six years. It is a large grow facility that can supply all of the cannabis related product that will be needed by Terry in her application. I've also assisted Nature for Remedy's founders in the many locations where they function. They function in multiple states. They are experienced operators. I've assisted them in their operations in New Mexico, Missouri, and Michigan, and Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut. When I was working with them in the state of Connecticut, we had an issue with the city there, and we donated hundreds of dollars and thousands of dollars to the local efforts there. Everywhere nature medicine goes, they are good members of the community. They support the community, and they participate in the community. One of the founders of Nature's Medicine is a pharmacist. At one time, he managed over forty Walgreens. He understands the medical side of this process. Uh, one of the other founders of Nature's Medicine is a very successful businessman in advertising. He started two different companies, and now he's moved into the cannabis industry. At this point, we believe that if you're going to have a dispensary, isn't it better to have someone local? Isn't it better to have someone who stands behind her who's also local? Isn't it better to have somebody who understands the law of Arizona, who's already in Arizona and can participate in Arizona? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don, thank you. Oh, we're just, so with, with regard to the two properties, again, our property, two seventy-nine South Mountain Avenue, uh, I will say that this meets all the requirements of the ordinance. Not only meets it, but the intent, there is actual separation between, um, physical separation, both physical and visual, between the proposed use and the protected uses. Nine hundred East Main, again, is located surrounding three churches and is within two hundred feet of residentially zoned property. Um, for these reasons, I do believe that South Mountain property is a stronger application. As far as the Apache County dispensary, it has changed hands many times. Now, that's okay. It's not against the law, but Terry, it's only been in her hands. The Apache, uh, with regard to the, the site, and we'll pause. I'll have to tell you, it's zoned properly, but it doesn't even have a conditional use permit yet. So not only are they not operational, but in addition, they haven't even applied for the conditional use permit, site plan application, or building permit application if necessary to run a grow facility. Again, our partner, Nature's Medicine, does. Springerville Smoke is, is one owner and operator. Under DHS rules, Terry could have applied for five applications, but she didn't. She applied for one. Why? That she's committed to Apache Junction, Apache County, we do work with that, you don't need. So we have not a hundred and ninety, but two hundred, two hundred and fifty letters of support. A member of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Kelsey, on item eleven.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll go to item eleven, uh, amended, uh, appeals and denied conditional use permit for Apache County dispensaries, nine hundred East uh, Main Street and Serenity Smoke LLC, two seventy-nine South Mountain Avenue. Session and consideration, appeals with the decision of the Springerville Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the conditional use permit applied for, by Apache County Dispensary proposal to be located at nine hundred East Main Street and Serenity Smoke LLC proposed to locate at two seventy-nine South Mountain Ave. Okay, you have a motion? What do we look at?
Well, yeah. Yeah, several options here, but all right.
So the procedural, uh, procedure that's outlined in the code does, um, have the, uh, the, the transalatency to go ahead and accept or deny the recommendations that came from planning and zoning, or you could set this out for a public hearing. And, um, following the hearing, you can also approve, deny, or make a new funding if that is what comes to the fight. So as there were two tandem, um, applications at the, uh, Planning and Zoning Meeting, staff wanted to allow both applicants the opportunity to fully address the, the agendas for separate presentations, but then for both, uh, to be discussed in light of the current code requirements, um, and really to try to have a fair discussion. So now would be the time of each town, Joe, to discuss both of its applications and either approve or deny or set out. Is that, is that addressed, discussion, as far as this go?
Let's get that.
I didn't hear that one say.
Matt, you can. We do have on the agenda pursuant to ARS section thirty-eight dash four three one oh two. Um, any item on the agenda may, may go into executive session.
Okay. Make motion, we'll go on to the executive session, nineteen fourteen.
Yeah, we need those bikes. Okay, we have a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I, can you post? Okay.